Okay, first thing up on the agenda is Nancy from Real Property Tax and Services.
And just as a reminder for all the board members, after our required forum that we had for the veterans tax exemption during that time, Nancy was here answering questions for the entire board and for the crowd at that point. At our last board meeting, we had a few additional questions we wanted to clarify regarding the impact of the veterans' tax exemption. She was kind enough to give up another summer night for us, so we thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
And for, now, do the board want to ask her, do you want me to sum up what at least the first question was? Why don't I sum up at least the first question, we can go from there. One of the questions that we had after the forum was if a veteran's tax exemption is adopted, is it the one or is it mirroring the exemptions from the respective towns?
The school district can only adopt one level because the school district is one taxing jurisdiction even though you have multiple towns. And I believe town adoption is really the only one that's different from the county and the other towns in the district. But you, as a school district, one taxing jurisdiction can only choose one level.
And then the second question, and I'll open up the board for whatever questions they may have. The second question we were looking at was if the exemption is adopted by the board, if at some future point, some future year, the board had decided they did not want the exemption, or the community no longer wanted the exemption, is there the ability for, to rescind it or not?
You do have the ability to rescind it, and that is under the premise that there is no language in the law that you cannot do that. But as it stands now, you can rescind it due to the fact that it does, it does not say that you can't.
Okay. Open up for everyone for questions you guys may have. But those were the two main from the last one that I remember.
That's not saying the law can't be changed in the future to...
Right. That could be challenged, yes.
If it's challenged, would we have to reenact it, reenact it again if they did put that language into the, the law, or is this...
I'm not sure if that's at work. I mean, I can ask Joe and see if he has an idea of how to rescind an exemption once it's there.
Can you elaborate a little bit about, you said we can only be on one level. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
There are different levels that the town can, sorry, school district can adopt. And there's a different level for non-combat, combat, and disabled. And as it is right now, the town of Evans, for example, they've adopted a level of $12,000 as the maximum value that can reduce a veteran's assessment by $12,000. The combat limit is 20, and the disabled is 40,000. Erie County and the rest of the towns in your district have adopted a higher level where 18,000 is the maximum a veteran can receive in their reduction of tax bill. If they were a non-combat vet, 30,000 for combat and 60 for disabled. So you have different scales, different levels for those three categories that you can adopt.
Those being the maximum values?
Mm-hmm.
What was wartime in Eden?
Wartime for Eden was, was 30,000.
Any combat?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wartime was 18,000, combat was 30,000, excuse me.
Okay.
Because Erie matches Eden right now. Okay. So it's 18, 30, and 60.
Correct.
Did you by chance happen to bring anything for board that can show them the different options at which they could choose?
Do you have a list of the different districts that have already adopted?
The only one that I remember of is the district of Guanda Central, and they adopted the, I'm 99% sure it was the 18,000, 30,000, 60,000.
So they went exactly with Erie County?
That's the only one in Erie County?
Yes. Now, the higher values that you see on the scale are for the higher appreciated towns. Erie County, Albany, and New York City, where if you have a K here that's worth 110,000, there it might be worth 250. So that's where you're going to see the higher limits.
So our options are really A through E?
A through E. Amherst and Clarence, I know, were a little higher, but I believe they're like G or H in there, but...
Okay. When you say Clarence is a little higher, you...
They've adopted a higher level.
They have adopted already?
Not for, no, I'm sorry, not for school district purposes, but their town.
Oh, for town, for, for town veterans exemption.
But we could set it at any level that we wanted to, even lower than A?
A is, um, yeah, C would be below us.
C. Okay, then lower than C.
It would be one of A through E. So you pick any one of those?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something that we could vote on a yearly basis? So basically extended a year, or the next year extended a year instead of, I mean, is that an option and something like this?
Can you give me the question?
If we, like, pass it every year? You know?
Oh, so you have Sunset Clause in Oakland?
Yeah.
That's a great question, Nancy, do you know?
Is that something you can do?
I don't know the answer, but I will...
Leave it to us to ask the questions, yeah.
The problem with doing a Sunset Clause, or doing it every year, is people that have escrow accounts for their taxes, their, their payments would constantly be fluctuating.
Well, not necessarily.
If you have a variable, it fluctuates all the time anyways.
You have to have, the escrow account has to meet the out pay, or you, then they double up on how much you owe them if they have to pay extra that's not in your escrow.
I mean, the, the issue that I was looking at is if, you know, it would be in the same boat if we ended up hypothetically rescinding it.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, that would be a different thing because that would be rescinding for a while, I would think. I don't think we would rescind it one year and then reinstate it the next.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it, from a question perspective, looking at it that, you know, it wouldn't box us in, and we would vote on it to make sure, especially around budget time, if we were pinched, you know? Just a question.
In Guanda, school district adopted this, correct?
Yes, they have, to be accurate, for the next school year.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. I don't know how to state it, though. In our community, we have a lot of agriculture exemption from taxes. Do you know anything about that? The agriculture?
And what else to school?
Um, well, county, whatever. Not necessarily school, but it's still taxes. I'm under the impression that each person, every year, has to fill out an application for that tax exemption. Do you know? Or is it a one-time fill-it-out and they get the exemption?
I believe they're set up differently, but I'm going to say I don't know if that one is just...
It's, it's every year, Patty.
Is it every year?
Yeah.
I'm wondering, like, maybe possibly, can we put a rider on maybe this one? I mean, like, if the farmers have to fill it out every year, maybe the veterans would have to do that too in order to get it. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of, I mean, if it's work for the farmers to...
Well, let me come off, offshoot from your question, because it was something I was just stating to Tom that I should have said on the mic instead, is if a, if a resident is getting the star exemption, so for property, they don't have to do anything in order for the vet tax credit to take effect, correct?
So they're gonna get the thing.
So if they're already getting the exemption as a veteran through their property tax...
Through the town.
Through the county, then they don't need to do anything if in fact a school district adopts the veteran tax credit exemption?
For the veterans that have the alternative vet exemption, they do not have to reapply.
The alternative veterans.
That's right. Because it's going to be the strength of their original application when they apply for county and town.
Right.
That'll qualify them for school.
I remember you saying that now.
Now, the Cold War vets are not included in this group, so they would not qualify for, if you adopt it, for this exemption.
So they would have to apply?
Not the Cold War. They cannot apply at all.
They cannot apply?
It's going to be eligible funds and a program of vets that would need to apply for the alt-vet exemption.
I remember you saying exactly that.
You're consistent, that's good.
What I do know, I know.
All right, thank you.
I will get to answer that one question about the Sunset Clause.
Perfect.
I'll board into town when I have it, and, um, we can discuss it. The thing is, you can...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate you coming out.
For the next presentation, we have Robert Souter from Walsh Dunfield.
Bob was unable to be here, so two other individuals from Walsh Dunfield will be joining us to talk about student insurance. And again, just to remind the board and all of our audience members about this presentation here, what we actually looked at, the district last had student accident insurance in 2011, 2012. And from there, the topic of conversation came up before the budget process began last year, should we be including the student accident insurance in this year's budget? We did budget 15,000 in this year, and we looked at what the options were. Considering the fact that we didn't have insurance for a good number of years, it took a little while to get a couple of good quotes as to what we would be looking at in terms of insurance. And there were five different options, which they came back with. And of those five, the one that was most similar to what we had before, just to remind everyone, because not everyone was here last time, was the second option, and it was in your board packets, and if we need to, I suppose we can make more copies if it's not in the document links, but we could definitely make more copies on there. But the second option was most similar to what we had in the past. A couple of questions came up in terms of looking at student accident insurance. Why student accident insurance as opposed to going through our general insurance? So here to answer the question, the lovely ladies who could talk a little bit about that.
Good evening. I'm Carol Waichman, and this is Victoria Weiss. I'll first talk about your general liability coverage, because that's probably where you would look for this coverage of student accident. And basically, it's a very simple reason why you would be looking for a different form of coverage. General liability coverage is liable coverage, so it's based on negligence. So from that standpoint, if a student were injured, his parents, because they would be a minor, would have to bring suit against the district, and you would have to be proven negligent for the insurance company to respond to any suit. So there already is an issue. We want, you know, to have a suit against the district. The other issue is general liability excludes injury to athletic participants. Obviously, you have extracurricular and athletic participants in your district to do this. And furthermore, I guess these insurance companies like to add exclusions on exclusions. General liability policy for schools actually excludes student medical expense. So it's not really just athletic injury, but it's just medical expense, which is the coverage that you would look for, for kind of an accident insurance for your students. The reason for that, that insurance companies do this, is that if there's another form of insurance that better serves it, they will most often exclude the coverage. And probably a good example is that, you're all familiar with your homeowner's policy, and we're all familiar with floods that we're moving the same throughout the country. Not, your homeowner's policy does not normally cover flood insurance, because all of us are not going to be exposed to floods. But those of us in creeks or bodies of water, or we're going to surprises, you know, rivers that are kind of coming at people. So there is an actual form of coverage through the National Flood Insurance Protection Policy that gives flood insurance. So with that, what we're basically saying is that, the issues we have is that the policy doesn't respond unless you were found negligent, you would have to be sued. And so that's suit against the district. But the other reason I would get is that if you go to other venues, or if your students go other places to play sports, someone may be looking for the coverage from the student from the district. So that would be the other reason. So with that, I'll turn it over to Victoria, who can explain a little more about student accident insurance.
Thanks, Carol. Ms. Carol, my name is Victoria Weiss. I'm from Walsh Dunfield. I'm from the Employee Benefits Division, and we handle the student accident insurance in our department because it's reimbursing for medical expenses. So like Mr. Murphy said, option number two for people benefits is most comparable to what you had in the past. So student accident insurance is in place for students that do have a sports injury, or something happens while they're here at school, supervised by the policy folder. So they have their primary medical insurance through their parents that would kick in first. So if they had to go see a specialist and they had a $40 copay, this plan would reimburse that $40 copay for that specialist visit. This policy does cover that student for that accident up to three years. So if they had something that was long-term, like physical therapy or something like that, it would cover the student up for three years for that accident. Option number two does reimburse up to $50,000, most similar to what you had previously. So that $50,000 limit is really there for a student that doesn't have insurance for that to be reimbursed. In most cases, when we did look at your loss ratios in the past, they were typical copays that were being reimbursed in the past. Do you have any questions?
So can you just elaborate on that for a moment? So when you see typical copays, what does that mean to you?
Typical copays is when you're just going to the doctor's office, or if you have to get a prescription. I know healthcare has changed a lot since you had the plan previously. There are high deductible plans in place now. So anything that would be coming out of pocket for medical or any dental that occurs due to an accident or a sports injury would be reimbursed. So if the family, say, has a $3,000 deductible, and their child is admitted into the hospital, that $3,000 out-of-pocket expenses would be reimbursed under the student accident.
And that is a big difference from when Eden had student insurance before, because that really didn't exist as much.
Yes, yeah, the high deductible plans are more recent than the past five years.
That is true.
But yes, it would cover up to that $50,000 if you went with option two, which is most comparable to what you had in the past.
Now, there was an option on there for 13, or just under 14,000, and one just over 14. Can you tell us really what the difference was between the 15,000 and 13,000 option?
Yes. The $13,000 option was option number four on the spreadsheet. On that policy, the medical expense max was $25,000.
As opposed to 50?
As opposed to 50, correct. And on that option number four, there's a $100 deductible first. So the parents would have to be responsible for the first $100 of medical expenses, and then the remaining costs would be reimbursed from the insurance policy. Option number three, which was that $14,548 premium, that has a $25,000 max on the medical that it will pay out, and there is no deductible on that plan. So those are the differences. So option number two has $50,000 max medical expenses with a zero deductible. Option number three had $25,000 with a $0 deductible. Then option number four had $25,000 in medical with a $100 deductible for the parents.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the summary on that.
Questions?
Many general liability policies have medical payment provisions which pay medical benefits regardless of fault or negligence. Are you familiar with our general liability policy?
Yes, and that's what I was explaining with the district's policy, what I'm describing. You're correct that general liability policies have medical payments, and the reason for medical payments under a general liability policy is for that slip and fall for members of the public who, like me, I come in and I slip, they say, Carol, I'm going to take care of your medical bills. It is different for students, however, and what we're saying is that school policies, policies that are written to cover schools typically exclude it. In your specific policy, not only excludes injury to athletic participants, but it excludes medical payments for students. So that really is the exception. That's not unique to this insurance company. This is the way the policies are written. And then the reason behind that, again, is because they know there's a student accident policy that bridges that gap, and that's the expectation that the district is going to be purchasing student accident insurance.
So you're saying it's pretty typical for school districts' general liability insurance to exclude student medical?
Yes. But medical payments is covered for members of the public, excluding other than students. So for, you do have medical payments coverage. It's part of your general liability. So I should have said that at the beginning. I do apologize.
That's okay. You answered the question, but there's an exclusion for students, which I think is the key point, yeah.
Well, and my concern is also the athletic participants. I think you're going to find a lot of the injuries occur, you know, during sports. That's usually when it happens, or even when they're horsing around or something like that. And that's important. If you go off-site when you're doing, say, you're doing an excursion or something, that's another need. But it really is the sports injury that I think you're going to find that that's important to do.
So with this policy, oh, I'm sorry, a class trip, they go to Boston, that child would be covered?
Okay. What would not be covered is if there's no supervision whatsoever. And it doesn't need to be our staff member who's watching. It could be the other team, but there has to be a staff member. So if they're on a practice themselves, that's not sanctioned by the school, that the kids are just there doing their own thing, would not be covered.
Right, yeah. So if they snuck away?
So if they snuck away, did their own thing, that's a totally separate thing than the school sanction about?
So correct me if I'm wrong, or if a student slipped and fell at the school, they're not covered?
Correct.
Really?
Not for medical payments.
I mean, we have majority of this people here in our, in school, our students, and we're not covering them, correct?
But if the school was negligent, say, had a war late, they slipped and fell?
It would have to go that route, then, of, shall we negligence, then our insurance would cover it because of the negligence portion.
We're talking about medical expenses and, well, I'm sorry, getting a little flippant here. General, GL policy, general liability, is going to have different components. Medical payment, payments, if you look at it, curves it out, and it's really, the function of that is you have this little bit of money that's set aside. Usually, it's $5,000 in the policy. It's a million-dollar basic liability policy. You have a little bit of insurance. And what it's doing is, the person can submit their bills, and usually what happens for a non-student is, if you've paid my bills, I'm happy. I'm not going to sue you. So if I was a person who was injured, and I said, look, I will take, I want you to pay for my co-insurance or any other bills that I do have, and I'm not going to sue the district, as a non-student, you would have $5,000 available. Now, if any, if any injury is going to be difficult, or, you know, very extreme, or very serious, obviously you're going to deal with the negligence issue. The general liability will respond because now you're going to be an issue of where you're going to have to be found negligent. So there would have to be something that you did or did not do to preclude this accident from occurring. And based on however the suit was, was brought in, you would then have to submit it to the insurance company. The insurance company would then take that information and start defending you, appoint counsel, and from there on in, you would now be in a suit. So the reason for medical payments, just that portion, without even talking about student accident insurance for members of the public, is it's a little bit of a bank account, so to speak, so that you can take care of those small slips and falls, and hopefully not sue. Probably the best example I can give you is auto insurance. Everyone knows about no-fault. No-fault gives you $50,000 coverage. And the reason for that was when people were getting hit or hurt, or, you know, you had accidents, everyone was suing everybody. No-fault is just that. It's called personal injury protection. The reason for that is it's to get those $50,000 undersuits out of the court cases. And so if I'm hurt, my policy will respond first. My no-fault, up to $50,000, is going to cover my injuries in the car. So it's that same principle. It's the idea of having a little bit of money set aside. The difficulty we have for school district is that policies are written to exclude it for students, not only for athletic participation, but just medical payments for students, just in general.
Can you get it written into a policy?
No.
They're not written at all?
Well, that's why you write a student accident policy. Again, the issue being, and I guess the best analogy would be the homeowners and the flood insurance. There's a different form of insurance specifically written for that exposure. And so the insurance companies kind of as a practice write in these exclusions, and then that becomes the way that exposure is taken care of.
Well, I know that Bob had said in discussions with him, he said, this is the first time he can remember that you guys have actually come and spoken before the board. So he wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to, you know, answer any questions you guys may have. Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
What do we have to do to have insurance in effect for the first day of school?
Well, it wouldn't be the first day at this point. I mean, what we would do now, we've already got a budget, so we'll move forward. If no one has any issues with, with that plan, we'll move forward. It might be a few days into school, but we'll get it started.
It's not something the board needs to vote on.
Okay.
Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, recommended motion that the Board of Education anticipates, or actually entering executive session to discuss a confidential employee's contract.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstentions?
Motion carries.
Will be about 15 minutes.
Motion to come back in this normal session?
I'm just going to get my computer back up.
Second, second, second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstentions?
Okay, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items.
A through...
A, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, A through...
Listen, that's not right.
Holy cow, I think that's wrong. A through U.
That's too big.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Motion carries.
All right, two minutes. Anyone that would like to speak, state your name, and you have two minutes.
Looks like no one.
No one wants to speak?
No.
Come on. Okay.
Okay.
Going on to new business. Item A, recommended motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent to resign for the purpose of retirement for bus driver Marilyn Jaeger be accepted effective August 31, 2014. The Board of Education Administration wishes to thank Mrs. Jaeger for her 36 and a half years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Could we back up for just a moment?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm just catching up here. Could we recognize two substitute teachers, three actually, that are here? Is that right with you?
Sure.
Kristen Birmingham is here. Kristen came to us last year as an intern. Kristen came to us last year as a counselor intern, and she is going to be with us for a little while as an extended sub, I think through the beginning of, of October, for one of our counselors who will be out. So welcome back, Kristen. We're thrilled to have you. And then Courtney, I know I'm going to mispronounce your name. I'm really sorry. Hanania?
Hanania.
Hanania. Courtney is coming on as a sub. You'll see her name later on as a pending FACS-certified teacher, but she still has exams to take, so she's coming on as a, as an extended leave sub for us as well. So welcome, Courtney. Thank you. And then Brian Smith is also here. Brian is waiting for the state of New York to finish his paperwork, right, Brian? So right here, he's coming in as a substitute teacher for technology. And your name is not coming up later, so we need to just congratulate you here. And I thank Matt for coming with you. I know he probably left. Thank you very much.
Okay, item B, appointments. The final recommendation that Paul Shepherd be appointed as voting delegate to the annual business meeting of the NYSSBA, and that Mike Barnes be appointed as an alternate.
Kristen came to us last year as a counselor intern, and she is going to be with us for a little while as an extended sub, I think through the beginning of October, for one of our counselors who will be out. So welcome back, Kristen. We're thrilled to have you. And then Courtney, I know I'm gonna mispronounce your name, I'm really sorry. Hanania?
Hanania.
Courtney is coming on as a sub. You'll see her name later on, as a pending FACS-certified teacher, but she still has exams to take, so she's coming on as a, as an extended leave sub for us as well. So welcome, Courtney. Thank you. And then Brian Smith is also here. Brian is waiting for the state of New York to finish his paperwork, right, Brian? So right here, he's coming in as a substitute teacher for technology. And your name is not coming up later, so we need to just congratulate you here. And I thank Matt for coming with you. I know he probably left. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item B. Appointments. The final recommendation that Paul Shepherd be appointed as voting delegate to the annual business meeting of the NYSSBA, and that Mike Burns be appointed as an alternate.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Or, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
I am.
See if you give me to read again.
I am, I am going to that.
Does that mean you get to go to conventions?
Absolutely. Here it is.
Okay. Okay. Point Board Education Subcommittee is recommended that the following Board of Education Subcommittee is consisting of personnel, Barb Henry and Patricia Kraus.
And me.
And Mike.
Person.
Burns. Burns.
Correctly, we have Barb Henry, Patricia Kraus, and Paul. Policy and Legal, we have Colin and Michael Burns. Technology Infrastructure Facilities, Mike Breeden, Scott Henderson. Negotiation, Scott Henderson, Colin Campbell. Audit, Mike Breeden, Mike Burns, and Colin Campbell. DSDMT, Colin Campbell. Legislative, Mike Burns, Paul Shepherd.
Did you get that, Barb?
No, I did not.
I had a feeling.
The only one that's switching is Seven.
We'll pass it over.
That would be great.
Well, this one's actually Paul. That's what we... Great. And then these for the liaisons. We're gonna switch around a little too.
Okay.
ETA.
ETA is Colin Campbell. CSCA is Scott Henderson. Administrator, administrators, Patricia Kraus, PTA Barb Henry, Boosters Club Mike Breeden. Grounds of Transportation, Mike Burns, and DSDMT, Paul Shepherd.
And then that, we're gonna switch you onto that committee instead of Colin.
I saw that.
Those are the liaisons.
Yeah.
So the purpose of a liaison, if someone could just go over that for a moment, because it's different than the subcommittee?
Well, last year we set it up so that we can avoid the rumor mill that we had the year earlier. So if there's an issue, you go to this person, and they can bring it to the board.
Okay.
Kind of make it a little bit easier.
So we'll make sure that we let people in the district know?
Correct.
The purpose of that.
And if they wanna meet with them, please contact them. I know last year some of them felt as though we were supposed to go out there and meet with them. It's mostly for that.
I did. I went, met with Martin, and I went down and met with Transportation Department.
All right.
Okay.
Do we approve it?
Yes, no, we haven't.
All right. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint extended leave substitute upon the recommendation of the superintendent Courtney...
I tried to do, Mike.
Hannah? I do apologize. Who is pending in certification as family and consumer science teacher be appointed as an extended leave substitute family and consumer science teacher effective September 4th, 2014 through October 30th, 2014. Salary is $95 per day.
Can we make revision to that to say September 2nd, please?
September 2nd, 2014 through October 30th, 2014.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Courtney, now we can congratulate you.
Yeah, now we can.
Okay. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent Claire Flynn, who is initially certified in the Students with Disability B through 2 and 1 through 6 in Childhood Education, B through 2 and 1 through 6, be appointed on probation as a special education teacher effective September 1st, 2014, and ending August 31st, 2017. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 1.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent Erin Farley, who is initially certified in Students with Disability 7 through 12 and Social Studies 7 through 12, be appointed on probation in the Special Education Teacher tenure area and Social Studies 7 through 12 teacher tenure area effective September 1st, 2014, and ending August 31st, 2017. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 1.
Second.
Discussion.
How long is a probationary period? Is it two years?
Three years if they have not been tenured before, two years if they have. I'm sorry. These ladies are here. Oh, we know. I know. I'll come back, thank you. I know. Thank you.
You don't wanna, I'm on the roll.
But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear the motion yet, so...
All right. All in favor? No?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So both Claire and Erin are here. If you'd stand up, we'd love to congratulate you both.
Thank you. And that's Claire, that's Erin.
Claire is on the left.
That's Claire.
And Claire is on the right.
Thank you.
Okay. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Corinne Nelson, who is professionally certified in Students with Disability 7, did I just read that one? No, that's the same one. Disability 7 through 12 and Social Studies 7 through 12 be appointed on probation in the Special Education Teacher tenure area effective September 1st, 2014, and ending August 31st, 2017. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 1.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And Corinne is here? Corinne?
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Okay. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Anthony Montero, who is...
Don't go back up to seven.
You missed seven.
Did I? Oh, jeez. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of superintendent Stephen Clancy, who is permanently certified as a library media specialist, be appointed as a part-time librarian, .46 FTE effective September 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 1.
Second.
Discussion.
What, what, what does it cover? The library media specialist? Why are we not...
This would be a GLP.
It's just for the GLP?
This is GLP, which is keeping the same level of services we had last year.
Then what about Sandy Kloss's job?
She will be solely at the elementary school.
Just at, is she full-time now?
No, she is not. We approved her at .74.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And Stephen is here. Stephen. So I just have to say that everybody calls him the skinny Santa Claus, so I think that GLP's gonna absolutely love you. And that Steve also works at the Buffalo Library, which I'm really excited about, because we are always looking for partnerships outside of school. And so thank you coming, for coming as well, Sandy. I know you're thrilled to have him and for you to be in one building this year. So congratulations again, Stephen.
Yes, welcome.
And we want a field trip to the Buffalo Library.
All the ETA.
Okay. Appoint part-time computer teacher upon the recommendation of the superintendent Anthony Montero, Montero, who is permanently certified in business and distributed education, be appointed as a part-time computer teacher, .5 FTE, effective September 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 1.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And Anthony is here as well, he's with his son. Welcome and congratulations. And thank you, I forgot your son's name, I'm sorry.
Giovanni.
Giovanni, thank you for coming with your dad. It was really nice of you. You probably got to stay up late, too.
Oh, it's summer still.
Oh, it's summer still. Okay.
And I wanted to apologize if I butchered anybody's last name.
Trust me, you did.
So I wanna let you all know, thank you for being here. You do not need to stay. You are welcome to get up en masse and go, and we won't talk about you if you choose to.
Mike, Mike, but I won't.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's no brownie points, so you can go.
There's no brownie points for staying. That's not my privilege. Not you. That was good, Mike. It was perfect.
Okay. Item C. Approved transportation. And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation be provided for the Eden Boys and Girls Club after-school program via one school bus for the 2014-2015 school year beginning on Thursday, September 4th, 2014, and ending Friday, June 23rd, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Accept donations of medical and office supplies. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, donation of medical and office supplies from Dr. Sharesh?
Gotti. Yeah.
Gotti.
Gotti be accepted.
Second.
Discussion.
What, what are they?
Okay. So Dr. Gotti was our school physician before, but also had a separate practice. He has retired, and has not forgotten about our district, and said he had plenty of office equipment to donate. And office equipment includes things such as scales, which we would not have in any of our offices normally, and nurses' office would. Right. Well, I said nurses' office would.
You don't want with that.
So, so we had file cabinets, we had, desks were there, we had a copier, a lot of office-type of furniture which he donated to us. So it was very generous.
Nice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Item E. Approved confidential employment agreement. That upon the recommendation of superintendent, the confidential employment agreement for Barb Tommasulo, the secretary of the superintendent, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. I just wanted to say thank you, well, as long as this passes, thank you both for your patience and all the other two also, and what you do for the district. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Approved confidential employment agreement that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the confidential employment agreement for Patricia Hawkins, the payroll clerk, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Approved confidential employment agreement that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the confidential employment agreement for Kathy Dobson, the part-time clerk typist, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Item G. Approved confidential employment...
You got it.
I did that one. It's, the problem is mouse is going backwards.
Minus two.
It's scrolling back, scrolling backwards, and it's easy for me to be confused.
Mac is completely reversed.
You missed dinner, didn't you? You missed dinner. I can tell.
Okay. There we go. Approved August appropriation increase. That upon the recommendation of superintendent, the 2014-15 appropriations be increased by $19,621.41 to $26,416,101.43 to account for increased revenue.
Second.
Discussion.
Lifetouch, just so everyone knows, is the company that takes the students' photographs. For part of the profits, we split with them, so those are the checks we actually receive.
Okay. Information proposals.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Boosters Club also for the $18,000 back to the district. And that, did that come from the parking?
Marissa, do you know where that came from?
No.
Oh, Mary knows.
The autism one.
GAA, the autism one?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But the, the $282.80 from the All Sports Booster for Modified Blue Cross Officials?
Yeah, that was carried over from last year because of the overpayment, so we're applying it to our system.
Understood. Okay. And then the $18,000 is from the...
The autism one. Correct.
Which we would thank Sean for heading up for.
Thank you, Sean.
Much better weather this year.
Yeah.
Much better. A really, a really amazing event.
Okay. Information proposals from administration's staff.
We didn't vote on age.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I thought we did, too. Who's second?
Barbara's now?
We had a second. We didn't know.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
All right. Now, information and proposals from administration's staff. Are there any?
No.
Nope. Business report. Tom, you're up.
Tom wants to talk again.
Really? Really? Very nice.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we're talking about reserves today, and I'll bring it up in one second. Let me just get it up here. Oh, you guys didn't even need to move. There's only one slide to show.
They just wanted to get away from you.
Okay. So, so if you guys recall from last year's conversation, we have everybody, the same the same people as last year's conversation, which is great. And... There we go. Okay, so from our last year's conversation, we talked about the fact that districts are allowed to have, can everyone hear me? That districts are allowed to have in their savings legally four percent of their unappropriated, of their budget. So for us, that means we are allowed to have one million and fifty-five thousand dollars in our savings account. Anything over than that, that we get into the territory of if we're audited, and I'm getting a little feedback here, so sorry about that, if we're audited, the O S C could come in and say, you guys need to spend down to get to the four percent. So as we talked about last year, generally speaking, you've got three options, just like last year, at either four, four and a half, or five percent to get us where we actually need to be. So if you look at the top part, if we stay at four percent, that's a million fifty-five. We went to four and a half percent in our savings, that's a million one hundred and eighty-seven, where five percent is one point three million. My recommendation again is we don't give the O S C reason to come looking at us and say, you are above what you should be at. But if we're going to put the excess, right now we have two million dollars, two point one, and we want to be at a million fifty-five, what I had said at budget time is we are going to be using reserves this year. So my recommendation will be, when it comes to that time to talk reserves, is to put the money back into the reserves we budgeted for this year's general fund. And that's exactly what we did. So for instance, just following the left column, E R S, Employees' Retirement System. We are saying that in the budget this year, you don't see it up on here, but I'm going to tell you, in the budget this year, we're using, actually, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right line here, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in our budget this year for E R S. I am recommending with the overage from the two point one to the million fifty-five, that we put four hundred and sixty thousand back into that reserve. Our reserve will be less at the end of the day than what it is now. For tax sursharing, right now, we are using in the budget for the coming year in tax, let me go in order. E R S is first. Unemployment is if anyone has any claims against us if they filed for unemployment benefits. I am recommending we put thirteen four back in. We are using fifteen thousand in the budget this year. So again, we're taking out more this year than what we're able to put back in. Next, E B L A, Employee Benefits accrued liabilities. Basically what this means, these are our legal obligations that we have to our employees that are contractual nature. Meaning, you are entitled to sick time. Once you've earned your sick days, we have to pay you no matter what. Once you earn your vacation days, we have to pay you no matter what. So we have to have that money for if and when that comes due. So that reserve's set up for that. So we're saying for that, that we are recommending seventy-eight thousand dollars. This year alone, we are taking out of that, just want to make sure I've done the right one here, forty-five thousand. So that one's going up just slightly. We were under where we could and should actually be. And finally, with the capital reserve, basically the difference to get us at the four percent, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, as we look to a potential capital campaign, it is smart of us to build up this reserve. The more that we actually have at this point down the line means the less that the taxpayers will have to foot later on because it already be there on the savings account.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Is it possible to move this money around once you put it in a particular place?
No, it's, they're restrictive. I mean, there are...
The capital has to be voted on by the...
The expenditures need to be voted on.
So if we put anything in there, it has to be voted upon.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So any money that you choose to put somewhere tonight, that's where it stays?
Yes, absolutely. So...
Well, not everyone.
Not everyone. That's correct. It depends on which reserve you're talking about.
The ones we just talked about.
It would stay there, yeah.
Okay.
Some, some of the reserves, if you close them down in total, you can transfer them, but it gets very complicated. For the most part, where you see them is where they stay.
So the E R S, the unemployment reserve, the E B L A, and the capital?
But again, looking at this, we are going to, at the end of the day, we're putting money in, these reserves will all be less than what we start with. Just to let everyone know. Other questions?
So what's the, where to do this?
There are three options, four, four and a half, and five percent. You need to choose which option you want to go with. And as you see, the way it's written is, it's, they're blanks. So the board would recommend option A, B, or C. A is four percent, B is four and a half percent, and C is five percent.
We don't have to vote on that tonight, do we?
That you do.
We do?
Just like you did last year.
Last year we were at four.
Yeah.
Last year we had a little bit more discussion. Granted, I don't know if we discussed this in the last couple of meetings, but, I mean, I, I, I'm a little, with putting a half a million dollars in the capital that has to be voted on, and we can't use it in any other, we can't take it back out and put it in the general fund.
Well, if...
So if we came into a dire need, needed the money for something other than this, we can't use it to come back out. Where some of the other funds, we can do that.
You're not putting a half a million?
Yeah, five hundred and forty-seven thousand in capital.
That's...
Yes, but that would actually put our capital reserve at about just under a million.
But yes, but that then classifies that half a million dollars for nothing else but capital. So if we run into any issues, we're S O L with using that money.
But that's, that's the case with any of your reserves that you're basically are looking at.
Well, not all of them. Some of the ones you can move back out to generate. You're kind of setting the tone here.
No, that's, no, you're right.
They're stuck in there. That's not the case.
No, that's true. So do, if you want, we can go through reserve by reserve and say which ones we can take out or not.
I would like to do that because more some of the reserves gives us a liquidity that we can then move around and take back out and utilize in the general fund instead of locking them in, and we can't.
Well, none of these you can just take right out and put in the, none of these are that simple. They could say, oh, we're, we're into a problem, we're just going to take from there. You can't do that. Now, what we can do with these is with the E R S, we know we have bills that come every year of about six hundred thousand dollars. Part of our budget now is based on that. We have said we will be spending at least six hundred plus thousand on using that reserve. And once you put that revenue stream in there, if you take it away, you've got to find six hundred thousand from somewhere else. So we pretty much have committed over the years to spending that amount of money. That's why we want to build that back up so we don't deplete it completely. But it doesn't just give us the option to say, okay, we're having a tough time. We only have, and here's an example, for instance, E R S, if our bill is six hundred thousand dollars this year, and we want to take a million dollars out of that reserve, legally, we can't do that. We have the money in the reserve, we can't do that because our bill isn't that much. So we don't even have the option to. So, and, and that's how a lot of those reserves actually work. You can't take out more than what your bill's actually for. So, but we can go three to one if you wanted to.
I don't think we need to go to reach one. Why does this have to be approved tonight? Is there, can we push it to next month? Or why didn't we wait until the last possible moment to approve this?
Well, first of all, I mean, this is exactly what we did last year too, in the same meeting. It was in the August, the second August meeting last year where we did this. And the reason we do it at this point in time, the books are closed out, we know what our balances are, and our audit's about to start.
You could have done this...
It would be difficult if your books are not closed to know how much you have left to put away. So could we have done this before, you know, in the beginning of July? No, because our books aren't closed and finalized at that point in time. So we have to finalize our books. Once we know, then we can actually look at the reserves.
The real question that I, that I think I'm hearing asked is, is not whether the amount each of these reserves is at, but whether the amount is four percent, four and a half percent, or five percent.
Correct.
As a not appropriated amount to move forward because you can't keep more than that anyways.
Correct.
That's the decision we have to make.
I don't have the problem with the four percent. I don't have the problem with the four percent. I just have the issue of where we put it.
Well, but Mike, here's the other thing too to keep in mind, and again, just in terms of brevity, I didn't say, you don't want to put too much money in other funds because number one, you can't go above what you can justify to the auditors. So for instance, the capital one, if we took that down to a hundred thousand and said, let's put the money in, in the other reserves, the auditors are going to look and say, you can't support that. You cannot show bills that sustain putting that much money in there. And we would get fined that way, or we would get an audit finding saying, you're putting too much into, again, I'll use E R S as an example, you don't have bills to support what you want to put in there. So I can't just take four hundred thousand, just throw it in another reserve. If I put it in the unemployment reserve, if we're averaging, you know, the thirteen four bills every year, which is what I suggest of putting back in, just what we're averaging, and it's going up, not down, and maybe if we can't get this back up. The auditors would say, okay, you are averaging thirteen thousand four hundred, but you just put four hundred thousand dollars in there. Can you support why you're putting that much money in there? We can't. So that's part of the reason as to why they're funneled this way, because we can support all money we want to do.
But these are not all our funds, are either.
No, that's correct. Our other ones are at a pretty good spot. These are the ones that quite honestly, we took money out for the budget. But that's why we're putting it back in, because we were bringing those reserves down.
Well, my biggest one is the capital. It's...
Well, we're also, as I've started, capital project, you have any one to begin?
But I mean, we're probably not going to be doing any construction next year.
Well, don't forget.
And there's a half a million in it already, so...
But, but you can also use it for bus purchases. This capital reserve includes buses, so we're going to be purchasing buses down the line. You can use that reserve for that. Again, it requires voter approval. So even if you don't do the capital project, doesn't mean it's necessarily locked up in a non-useful way. No, but that's what, that's exactly why you guys are having the discussion. And just so you know, in terms of the capital and reading the restrictions on this, let me just read this because this may help in the discussion. Purpose must be specified, i.e. to purchase school buses, facility construction, equipment, et cetera. Total expenditures over the life of each reserve may not exceed voter-approved maximum. Mike, I think this part, that would be interesting for you. Funds may be transferred to other reserves only with voter approval. So you can actually transfer this to another reserve with voter approval. So you do have the ability at some point if you want to move that. So next year, let's say if we end the year, we have no additional monies and we found ourselves in a tight spot, the voters can say, take it out of here and put it into another reserve, which we can then use for our budget. So for instance, the employee retirement reserve, we can say, and I'm just giving an example, the voters say...
An example would be if the Cogen blows up.
To a repair reserve.
And, and, which, as we know, Cogen has an issue, and then we have to have a special election to get voter approval to get that money out to spend it with Cogen.
But that's a different reserve. There's a repair reserve for that, and it has to be in unforeseen circumstance. But, but you're right, there are restrictions on each of the reserves. So, so that is, that's part of it right there. I mean, that's, it's, how do you do the balancing act down there? So you have to be able to justify each reserve you're putting in.
I mean, whereas if you put it in the reserve, then it only takes board approval to move it, it makes it easier.
That's true. But again, putting, taking, let's say, four hundred thousand out and put it into another reserve, you're going to get an audit finding saying you're putting too much into any, any of those reserves. That, that'd be too much to just dump into without good justification. I think we'd be very hard pressed to say any of those other reserves adding, you know, four hundred thousand, or whatever the amount's got to be. You can go up a little on some of the reserves, so, but it would be, you'd be skating very fine line with the auditors.
So the most flexibility would be at five percent, right?
Well, again, my recommendation to the board is, well, at five percent, you're putting more into the capital reserve. If you take a look at this, you're actually putting more into the capital reserve because it's putting less percentage of the E R S, the unemployment, and the E B L A. Actually, unemployment stayed the same all the way through. The issue you run into there is the O S C. You get audited, you're over that four percent. No matter what option, no matter where you put the money, I, I think a board in a district is best positioned now to rule over what the state is saying you should be at.
So your recommendation's four percent or four point five?
Mine is four, no matter where you put the money, no matter which reserve. Those are two separate issues. The amount, the four percent, and then which reserves. So if we look at just the percent, my recommendation clearly is the four, and I have stated why. In terms of where you're putting money, that's the question that Mike actually has. That's a, that's a different recommendation. So four percent will keep, if the auditors come in, or the audit that's about to happen, there won't be any findings if we stay with four percent? At this point, with these recommendations, there would not be a finding, there should not be any findings that we are above where we should be at all.
But these are our internal auditors, not state auditors.
Well, no, these are external auditors.
Yeah, or our rehired.
They're, they're ours, but they are external auditors. They send the information to the state. The O S C can come in at any point in time and actually take a look at it.
So a couple of years ago, there was a local district that had more than four percent. So let's hypothetically, in fact, the, the board would go more, more than four percent, and the O S C had a finding and came back, what would they say? What could they tell
The O S C uses the bully pulpit to really get you to do what they want. So they will go out to the media and say, taxpayers, the district has more than four percent of your money.
Didn't that happen here?
It did.
It did happen?
It has happened, yeah.
It's just a couple of years ago here?
Yeah.
It was in the Buffalo News and it was in the media, yes?
It's happened, it's happened in many districts. And there, there are not many districts who can say to the O S C and to the P R, we don't care, we're going to stand by. And that's Williamsville.
Williamsville that keeps a higher amount.
Correct. So, but once they do that, then, then you have to do that immediately. You have to take immediate action. Again, I, I personally, my recommendation, and that's what you asked for, is just my recommendation, you guys choose what you want to do with that, is I don't want to put our district in the position of being told what to vote where by the state. That's me. You guys don't necessarily need to take that recommendation, but that is my personal recommendation.
Tom, tell me about the unemployment. There's, you said that we need more in there. Why are we only putting thirteen thousand in there if we need more?
Well, we could actually put more. I'm trying to be responsible and show, one of the things they also look at as well, that the O S C and auditors look at is to say, are you ever using your reserves? If you are just simply, you have a reserve at the maximum amount, which we're not at a maximum amount, but if you have a reserve at a maximum amount, you take some out and you put that maximum amount in again, they're going to say, you're not using your reserves at all in any strategic way. For us, what most districts should be doing is using our reserves sporadically to support the budget, not to necessarily just spend down or just to keep and never use. It has to be a balance between the two. So if we just put the maximum amount in every one of these reserves, which we could do and put nothing in the capital, then we get the finding saying, look, you guys are building up your reserves with no plans to use just for the capital. Then you get found for that as well. So, so it, it kind of, it's a no-win situation. So you try and do what is most reasonable to do for the district, showing that you're using districts. We've had the comment here from the public statement that we haven't used necessarily enough of our reserves. These three reserves, putting the money in, we will actually, at the end of the day, have less in the reserves than what we started with. So we are using them in our budgets. So we're using them strategically.
So you need a motion that...
Which person, which plan you want to go with, A, B, or C? And it's written on there with blanks. Option...
Is it like A being four?
A's four, B's four.
So instead of saying A, I could say, go with the four percent?
Yeah, she can, she can equate it to that, yeah.
But then, when you say option A or four percent, does that lock us into where you want to put it?
It actually...
I was going to say, option A or four percent as presented.
You, you could always say, Mike, if you really wanted to.
Say that.
You can say...
I would like to make a motion that it's four percent, option A as presented.
Second.
No, I mean, you already know my opinion. I, I don't like a half a million dollars sitting in the capital reserve budget that you have to get voted on.
I mean, then where do you want us to put it?
Let's go over the different items, because there's, there's a bunch more reserves in our list here. I mean, these are reserves that Tom selected that, you know, give us that the last moment to do this.
If we're going into this.
Quite honestly, if you're looking at it, I don't even think a million, in my personal opinion, is a healthy budget to have going into a capital project. Because again, if our A ratio is roughly seventy-four percent. But if taxpayers are picking up twenty-five percent of the cost, and there will be other costs that we're not even calculating in. So in a six million dollar project, okay, so you're talking one point some are going to be picked up by the taxpayers. And having a million here helps. We may not have a budget neutral capital project, but it really helps. I always get very wary whenever I hear anyone say budget neutral. I think it's very difficult to promise budget neutral and say taxpayers will not be affected in any way, shape, or form. So does this put us in the range of having too much in the capital reserve if we do one in the five to seven million? Absolutely not.
But you were just alluding to the fact that, you know, the auditors will sit there and say, well, you haven't used these funds, and we haven't used the capital fund in over, now, four years.
But now...
Now you're putting money into it and you don't have any...
Because now we can show auditors, we are actively pursuing the options for a capital project. We have hired an architectural firm, you know, we are taking steps to, yeah, construction manager, we are taking steps to look at that. We are, again, purchasing buses where we haven't purchased them in the past couple of years. We are taking steps where we can say, yes, we are actually making capital purchases or planning for potential capital purchases.
Ordered.
So from that perspective, the auditors would say, okay, you're showing at least good faith that you're using it and why you'd be putting it in there.
Ordered a building condition survey.
A building condition survey, right?
Yes.
So it's a dependable position to actually be in at that point.
So, what are your second? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And while you guys might as well just keep sitting over there, well, actually, the next one is actually rather simple, it's really that I'm going to handle for. Yes, the transportation rates. Okay, and with the transportation rates, let me look at the board agenda. Rob, can you read the transportation rate amounts for me? That'd be wonderful if you could.
I can't find my glasses.
Is it, is it thirty, is it right here?
Driver's rate thirty-five point two eight, mileage rate point eight oh.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the recommendation is that the driver rate increased slightly at a thirty-five twenty-eight, but the mileage rate actually is going down to eighty cents. And how does that compare with last year? The mileage rate was eighty-five cents, the driver rate was thirty-four seventy-four. And really, the difference in the mileage is just less expenditures in the transportation department, but the salaries have gone up a little with the new contract. So it's slight increase somehow.
What's the difference?
Went from thirty-four seventy-four to thirty-five twenty, so roughly fifty cents.
Do we need a motion?
No, this isn't actually a vote. It's just letting everyone know that's what we're charging this year for transportation, running outside groups.
Good?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm going to move then. Mike, you ready for me to move on?
Yep.
All right, the time for the meetings, the board actually adopted the third Wednesday of every month for a Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock. Some conversation actually happened after that meeting amongst administrators and also just basically, I think, conversation that happens sometimes when we're out in executive session. And also from last year, because we know that when budget season comes around, that the BAT meetings or the Budget Advisory Team meetings, sometimes the discussions go a little longer. We can't really start before five forty-five because so many of you work and can't get here any earlier, as well as other community members that are on that team. And we try to end it about quarter to seven to give poor Lucinda a chance to set up by seven, when we really probably gave her about three or four minutes last year, and that was noted, Lucinda. So the, the question really becomes is, 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 I'll try to put it as simply as I possibly can, is do we go for a later board meeting like seven fifteen or seven thirty during budget season when the BAT meets? Or do we stay at a consistent time to make sure that people are confused at what time the meetings are and push it to seven fifteen or seven thirty? Or we do not pay any attention to the fact that we're kind of running out of time between quarter to seven and seven and keep them at seven? So I just wanted to bring that forward again because there was some conversation amongst the community after the board approved the meetings for seven o'clock.
If we went to seven thirty though, wouldn't the BAT meeting just go to like seven twenty?
Like a purse, you mean, you know, where you put in it?
Yeah, I mean...
The other thing about the, about the BAT meetings is I think that the, the first year always takes a long time. I think they would, might be able to be more efficient.
Plus, you don't want to be too late, because you do have white government students coming in here and, you know, they get homework, school the next day and so forth. You don't, I mean, sometimes we're here until 10:00, and unfortunately, they stay until 10:00.
What time does a BAT start?
5:45.
I think moving it to 7:15 is a fair... But time, it gives us a little bit more fluctuation between...
Could you start at 5:30?
We could, but not everyone can get here by 5:30. That's, that was the issue, that's why we picked 5:45, because it really was a struggle for people getting out of work at 5:00 to be here by 5:45. They were able to get here for that. You move it up much sooner.
So, you're saying to compromise between 7:00 and 7:30, go to 7:15?
I'm saying that's an option that you have. Either stay at 7:00 all the time...
I'm saying all the time.
Stay at 7:15 all the time for ease of what time it starts, or 7:30, or just change it during the budget season, which would be November through June.
I don't know about five, like later, honestly, because we always seem to, which is fine, have executive meeting first, so maybe if we can have that before, and that will actually help with the meeting time also, too, with the discussions. So, maybe regular board meeting starts at, well...
So, your regular board meeting has to start before your executive session?
Okay, well, then, I don't know, regular board meeting still starting at 7:00 or something?
I know in Hamburg, they, I think they, they tell the public it starts at 6:30, but the actual meeting doesn't start till 7:00 or 7:15, I can't remember.
So, one of the things...
We know how the wall says Hamburg does, so...
It's a really good district.
That might be one thing they got going for them.
So, one of the things I can tell you is that we can't, if you notice the way that...
Is there any recommendation for Buffalo, what they do?
We can only propose on an agenda that we go into executive session, because you vote on it. So, it's, it's difficult for us to make an announcement, even if other districts are doing that, if they're not really legally doing that, to say that we're going into executive session, because the board actually chooses whether they want to go into it or not.
I mean, I'm comfortable with 7:15, I think it...
I mean, it would make things easy if the BAT meetings truly does end at 7:00, so there is that time to set up and...
Well, actually, they were supposed to end before 7:00.
They are supposed to go from 5:45 to 6:45. We can say, if we wanted to do this, and this is where the issue ran into, and it really became more of an issue towards the end of the Budget Advisory Team meetings, not at the beginning. At the beginning, ending at 6:45 was not an issue.
And it really is, it really is intended to be the budget talks.
So...
The Budget Advisory Team meetings really are the budget conversations.
Correct. So, so part of the purpose of the Budget Advisory Team is, rather than doing it fully through the board meeting, there's a separate forum to have those discussions. If you have none of those discussions and just bring it, those discussions into the board meeting, it kind of nullifies the reason for the Budget Advisory Team. So, you want most of those discussions during the Budget Advisory Team meetings. What happened last year near the end is people wanted more discussions than what the time allowed, as we got towards the meteor subjects of athletics and transportation near the end.
So, why don't you just set a couple, knowing that, pick out two, two of the BAT meetings at the end and have, and plan that they're going to run to 7:30 and start the board meeting at 7:30, those couple a night.
Take your March, April meetings and move those, because that's when the heaviest action happens in March and April with the BAT.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, Colin.
And do a 7:30 start in March and April.
Right.
So, does somebody want to do a motion? Does that make sense? Do you want to do a call?
So move.
I'll second.
That we start the March and April board meetings at 7:30 to allow additional time for the BAT meetings to take place.
And all the rest of the meetings would start at 7:00?
Yes. Have schedule.
Are you okay with that motion?
Second by Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Good job. Lucinda?
The links aren't working.
I pushed the wrong button, though. The links are broken today. We're making you work today, yes. It's the board goals. Actually, the district goals.
Do you know what the link is called? Brett, do you know what the link is called? Or district goals?
Yeah, it's up at the top. She's got it.
Look at you, good for you. Okay, yeah, I didn't want to get it on the screen.
Green button.
See? There we go. All right, so this is a, a conversation piece for tonight, not a board action, but it would go up as a board action in September, but it would be nice for me to be able to start the school year out, was having had some conversation with the board. Last year, the district goals that were adopted, so the 13, 14 district goals that were adopted were these three. And I'm, I'm really, really proud to say that we spent a lot of time and some, some serious conversation about looking at facility changes and improvements, and that we are now in a really, really good spot with Young &amp; Right as our architectural and engineering firm, and Campus as our construction management firm, to be able to create a three-year written plan, help guide us. And it might actually take us out to 10 years, if in fact, we can pull a birth through five census out of this. And so, I'm excited about stating, well, while it might not look like we managed, number one, we at least got a really good start on it. Number two, which is to increase the academic rigor and raise expectations for all IN students, it was a conversation at every single one of our administrative meetings, we had laundry lists and goal setting across all buildings in most, if not all, faculty meetings. So, this is a, an opportunity for us to say to our teachers, to our students, to our parents, that all of us can always increase the amount of effort that we put into things, and also to raise the expectations that we have for our teachers and our students. My recommendations are to keep both of those, as they were written for 13, 14. Number three, which is to strengthen the culture of the district by building greater trust through improved communication. We've really, really tried, there's some things that we've gone back on to try to improve communication even more, but a sense of transparency across the district with our Board of Education, with our administrative team, our teachers and our students, and our website certainly, and again, I would thank everybody who has a hand in our website. One of the things that we are doing differently this coming year is to, all of our global connect calls that go out, sometimes the global connect is not great. I mean, Mike got caught up in that and other people had to hear me all over again. But that's really not coming from us, it's coming from the software, is to also have those messages up in print. And so, that's one more opportunity for us to try to improve communication with the residents and the parents. The digital sign that the town was so helpful in helping us bring about is also another way for us to improve communication and try to create this school-community partnership. So, my recommendation to the board is to maintain the three district goals as they were written last year, and then to add one more. This one is coming to us from our, from the state of New York, it's coming through many of our district level and regional and state commu-, state committees to, to state that an effective implementation of the Common Core state standards is what we're really after. Because there are school districts that are implementing, but they're not implementing them effectively. And there are school districts that are getting great scores, but they're doing that drill and kill when it comes to any of the assessments, aside from the standards. And so, a district goal really would be to focus, and we have Kelly this year to help us focus, to effectively implement these as we move our way up. And we've done a great job, it started with Lauren a couple of years ago, we're way ahead down at the primary levels, most of our kids or all of our kids really showed some drastic improvement when we looked at data, and now we're starting to look at more of our, our middle years and high school years of implementation of something that's brand new. So, my recommendation to the board, and it's really just here for me to show you tonight for you to have conversation if you choose, would be for the September meeting for the board to adopt the district goals as they are here, which are the first three, the same as last year, with an addition of number four. So, I would entertain a conversation on any of them.
I'd like, can you elaborate a little bit more on have we increased the academic rigor and what were the outline for increasing the rigor and raise expectations for, you know, it's, it's nice to look at it in type, but what have we truly on concrete done?
Can anybody tackle that one offhand?
We put, we worked hard to strengthen our Tier One instructional program, which is for all students, so instructional strategies and methodologies that are used.
And how did we go about doing that? Was it like a, an extra class for the teachers?
Through our hosting staff development...
Staff development.
Faculty meetings through information from state...
And do you know if it's been successful at all?
And it's ongoing, I mean, it's not, it's not done, we're just starting down that road. And then also adding more college-level classes here at the high school is a way that it increases rigor.
I think some additional specific examples, we talk about raising expectations, I can say at the primary level, we raised our benchmark expectations. So, some simple things like sight words, we expect certain sight words to be known at the end of the year at certain each grade level. The expectation is now that they know more sight words than they just know. When we benchmark that, the level of expectation for each benchmark at certain points of assessment is expected to be higher. I think the implementation of the Common Core has raised expectations just as a given. Their, they, the knowledge that they're expected to know and be able to complete is much higher than it was in the past. So, the curriculum itself has helped us to reach that goal, because it's just embedded in the instruction we provide.
And that's making sure that the teachers have proper diagnostic information on student achievement, so knowing their student's reading level, knowing their student's ability in that, and then changing the instructional strategies to make all students successful in alignment of the Common Core standards across the board. So, there was staff development over the summer with the new math program, with new reading, using reading tools to diagnose reading levels, especially at the elementary level. That's something new that we're putting into place.
I mean, you'll often hear stuff like...
Thank you.
Differentiating within the classroom. You can start by knowing exactly where is a child at in your classroom. So, doing things like running records and anecdotes, so you can say, for your entire class of 25 students, this is their exact reading level. So, then when I provide guided reading instruction, I'm providing it at their reading level. So, it's not a guessing, and you know exactly where they're at, you provide instruction at that level. So, if you have students in third grade reading at a fifth grade level, you provide instruction at that fifth grade level. So, that's raising that rigor, being able to use that exact information and data that you have to provide that instruction. So, you're raising those expectations of what you require your teachers to do, and then you're raising the expectations of how you instruct the students and what you ask them to do at the end.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Okay.
I would just like to say that the way that that's worded...
Which one?
Which one?
Number four. As far as the Common Core itself, it is, to me, the curriculum, not the teaching methods. Teaching methods with the Common Core are wonderful, but the curriculum on some of the younger levels, over the years, and with this in particular curriculum itself, they've changed and modified for...
The curriculum is different than the standards.
Correct. So...
This is only addressing the standard.
Okay, I guess maybe just even having Common Core and being associated with the whole national, nationalization of our school systems and that curriculum itself. As a board member, I, I don't necessarily like being put on the spot saying that that is what I want our school to be known as. How about we'll say that? Like I said, the teaching, implementation, and everything that the teachers are learning to do to get the data, all this, fine and good, but not maybe necessarily what the children are being taught.
And that, again, is different than the standards, though.
Still, I don't, I don't like Common Core to be in my goals as a, as a school board member.
I think there's been an effort by some nationally to give Common Core a bad name, and I don't think it's entirely accurate. I don't think Common Core is curriculum at all, it's just, it speaks to a general raising of standards, so that all states are on a relatively equal level. And it's something that is supported by the business community, by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, by most people. I mean, it's, it's a minority that's been attacking it. And it's, it's gotten so silly that, I forgot what state it was, but they, to deal with all the criticism of the words Common Core, they said, we're not going to do Common Core. So, they withdrew it and they put a different name on it and passed that. Do you know what state this was? It's essentially the same program.
I'm looking at Kelly.
But now, now everybody is entirely happy with it. There's no complaints. So, it's, it's states, it's a state's implementation of Common Core that...
It was the national, well, it was the standardized testing that really caused an uproar.
Which is, again, different than the...
Right.
It is.
But the standardized testing is what really brought it.
Can I put you on the spot and ask you a question?
Sure.
Would it, would it make sense for the September meeting to bring some of those standards forward and show the difference between those and the curriculum?
Or you the difference between the new standards versus the old?
The old ones. I think that's a great idea.
The new standards adopted by state add our expectations of the LA math and what a student has to be able to do by the end of that...
As opposed to what a teacher teaches by the end of the school year?
Correct. And there's anchor standards in each area that start in kindergarten and build up all the way through 12th grade, so they're sequentially built on each other to make a final accomplishment at the end of your senior year. So, then you're ready for college or career, depending on what path you choose. So, yeah, the, at the heart is the standard, and then the curriculum is your, the way you get to the standard.
Would that, would that be helpful to you as a board, to see that?
Sure, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, the difference in the standards would be nice to see.
From the old to the new?
Mm-hmm.
Would you be willing to do that, Kelly?
Sure, I can give a few examples, because you can spend hours and hours and hours watching the show.
What you have.
Where the old standards were very general, nonspecific, more like a checklist-type thing, like, yes, I do that as a teacher, yes, I do it as a teacher, where the new standards are centered on what the student is able to do.
How about more, I'm interested, because I've had a few parents of like second graders that have told me that, okay, so how old are you in second grade?
Seven.
Seven. Their kids were learning about sit-ins and just, what was that curriculum and why would you be learning about a sit-in at seven years old?
That's part of the listening and learning strand, which there's several reasons why, not particularly sit-ins, but why that's structured the way it is. That's to build background knowledge in content areas, social science and social studies, build their listening skills. So, before you're able to understand from reading a passage, you need to be able to understand from listening to a passage.
Okay, I guess maybe, like I said, it's what is being taught. I don't, I don't understand why at seven.
So, they all have to be tied to a theme of, I don't remember exactly what the theme is, succession, succession rate, simulation, et cetera, yeah.
At seven.
Yeah, so it's, it's based on brain-based research, when they are exposed to these things at a younger age, who reach elementary, over elementary rate of age and are expected to read those topics, and you've never heard about them before, can't understand it then, so your comprehension score is kind of lower. Whereas when they're exposed to this and talked about in an age-appropriate for a seven, seven-year-old manner, then they can build that background and understand they're not exposed to those topics. So, when they're older, it's not totally brand-new to them. To consider integration of the science and social studies also.
I guess...
So, what we vision as a sit-in might necessarily be the way it's taught to a seven-year-old.
And you're not, at that age, you're not tested on it, you're not like great about a sit-in or multiple choice questions about sit-ins, just a general development building around different topic areas. So, they might learn about ancient civilizations, Mesopotamia, Greece, and various topics like that, life cycles and science. So, it's done in a different way.
I guess it just seems very liberal for a seven-year-old to be learning, that's just so young to be...
I think, what I think, when you, when, if you want to see it in the context that it is in, then maybe it wouldn't seem bad, like when you see what, what, how it's being presented.
Okay.
Around the topic. around the topic. Because I can see your concern.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, for September, what I would recommend is that, is that Kelly, if she's willing to do a short presentation for the board on just the transition of the, and the difference in the old and the new standards, and then a motion, Mrs. Tomasula later on, to adopt district goals. These are not board goals. Board goals, obviously, are just how the board functions. This is district goals. Okay. I'm done.
You're done.
I'm done. I don't know how to close this out.
I read that.
Veterans tax exemption, once again.
Tom, I don't see another red button.
On the upper left.
After.
And then now the green button.
You know, it's a whole lot easier on my computer. There you go.
You got it?
I don't know. I guess.
Let me see if I can make it bigger for you.
Which plans?
That might be you in here. Yeah, but it doesn't work.
It's not working.
Links are broken.
Well, we might need to get back in a little bit.
We need Lucinda.
Tom, Tom.
Which link do you want?
Veteran tax. Barb knows. Do you know, Barb?
It's the tax exemption. I would have to see if I, it might be, there, right there, tax exemption.
The resolution.
Oh.
That's, that's Collins.
Well, we can do that one first.
That was the only one I had then.
I'm going to do that.
Oh, she didn't.
Yeah, we'll do that first, and then they'll pull up.
Was there anything, was the rates?
No, she passed out the rates. She passed out the rates of the different rates. So, we had not, nothing. This is just discussion.
We have to, we wrote it. Are we doing the resolution?
We'll do the resolution first, then we'll discuss what's going forward.
So, there is no enclosure on the rates. That was something Nancy passed out to you today.
Right. Right. This is just your discussion about it and all that. From the background, you're...
Okay. But we'll do the resolution now, and then we'll move.
All right. Well, this comes out of the last meeting. We had a discussion about the veterans' tax exemption, and I said that I would submit a proposed resolution. So, I'm submitting, this is proposed. I'm submitting it to the board. And if you support it, I guess you're essentially registering your disagreement with state government for the way in which this was enacted and the way in which it proposes to work or doesn't work. And I don't expect that in passing this, we're going to get a telephone call from the governor responding to it. But I guess my hope would be that perhaps it might get disseminated to other school boards, and it might gain some momentum there. And at very least, it, I think it serves as a good educational piece for the public in terms of showing them the ins and outs of this legislation. And so, if we have the public vote, they'll know, at least know better what they're voting on. So, it's there. Do I need to read it, or can everybody read it?
I think it'd be great if you read it.
Okay. It's not that long. So, it says, "Whereas, the New York State Legislature previously enacted Real Property Tax Law, Section 458A, which provides a partial exemption from county, city, town, and village real property taxes to qualified properties owned by veterans." So, that's the law as it was before this.
That's what gives the star.
Yes.
That gives the veterans exemption.
Veterans exemption. Then, "This past December, the legislature revised that law to indicate that school districts could choose to also provide such an exemption for school taxes, but failed to include any provision requiring the state to reimburse or replace the lost revenue, and in fact provided that the lost revenue would be replaced by increasing the tax rates for all non-veteran or otherwise non-qualified taxpayers in the district. And whereas, the governor and the legislature apparently failed to consult with or seek input from any school boards before enacting this legislation, and whereas, the governor and the legislature continued to ignore our request," and we did this by prior resolution last fall or last spring?
We didn't.
"to end the temporary, so-called temporary gap elimination adjustment measures, which have cost this district many millions of dollars. And whereas, this body honors, recognizes, and thanks all veterans for their vital contributions to and sacrifices for the safety and well-being of their fellow citizens. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District calls upon Governor Andrew Cuomo and the New York State Legislature to revise Real Property Tax Law, 458A, to require that the school districts which opt to provide the veteran's school tax exemption be fully reimbursed for the cost of same by the state of New York." That's the resolution, or proposed resolution.
You need a motion on that?
I think it's written very well, Colin. Thank you for doing that.
I'll make the motion.
That's very good.
I second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Nice job.
Resolution passes.
Thank you, Colin.
With that said, I guess then we have to decide how we're going to go forward with this veteran tax exemption, whether we're going to do a public vote, a board vote, and whether if we do go to the public, will this board support what the public says. For me personally, I personally support it. But I also will say that if we go to the public, if they vote no, I would be a no vote. They vote yes, I would be a yes vote. So, I don't think we should go to the public. And then we have a yes, and then half the board votes no, and we don't pass it. So, I guess that's...
So, the question is, is whether the board goes to a non-binding referendum?
Will we support that decision?
What a non-binding referendum really means, and whether the board would honor the majority vote in a non-binding referendum regardless of the number of voters who came out to vote. That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So, if I could just jump into that on what Mike was talking about. On recommendation, what we have been told is that if the board was to vote on a veterans' tax exemption, the vote would have to be at the December board meeting. Backing that up, that means that the...
Move it upstairs.
Board would have to make a decision at the September 17th meeting that they want to do a non-binding referendum so that we could actually have a vote after posting it in the papers for 45 days. And it looks as if that vote would go to the public in the second week of December to meet all those guidelines. Not a lot of latitude here.
No, that's a very tight timeline.
We've run the schedule three times.
Because we put it, I mean, there's going to be a vote this November. Is there any way we put it up to vote since we can, once we get the statistics the next day from the vote in November?
What's the vote in November?
You got county clerks being voted on. You got all these, you know, elected officials being voted on in November. Why can't we put it on the ballot there? That way, we get a lot more people to come out. And, and we will know the results the next day. And of that...
Barbara, are we able to tie into the towns?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I'll have to find out.
I mean, it would be, I mean...
It saves us money for this case.
It would be great. It could save us money. It's all in the ballot. It's on, if we could do it.
I'll check tomorrow.
And that way, we know the results, and we can vote on a December election.
It could save us $2,000.
Yeah.
Do we have to...
I'll support that if we could do it in November.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be, if we could do it, that would be a win-win.
When do we come up with an amount that we're going to...
That's what we have to discuss now.
Along those lines, I would like to suggest that...
Well, we don't have to do it now, but we'd have to do it before.
You have to make a decision at the September board meeting.
Along those lines, I'd like to suggest...
The amount you could do before you would have it.
Okay.
I'd like to suggest that the amount be the same as Eden does and Erie County does for the veterans. And we could justify that by, it's the one that's accepted, and it's the, most of our districts, the only district that doesn't do the same is Evans'. And if I was not mistaken, Evans actually is a higher.
Which was the one adopted?
Eighteen, thirty, and sixty. Eighteen for wartime, thirty for combat, and sixty for disabled. And it's exactly what the town does. It's exactly what Erie County does. And like I said, it's what most of ours...
But that's, that's also the max, from what Nancy said, that eighteen, thirty, and sixty is the max amount.
No.
That we would be able to adopt. We can adopt anywhere, if you're doing it from options A through E. Those are your choices. E is the top choice. So, the eighteen, thirty, sixty is the top choice.
Hey, Tom, are you, are you a veteran?
We can adopt Q if we want.
Yes, I am a veteran.
Are you a veteran, and will you benefit from this?
No, she said we couldn't for whatever reason.
Would you benefit from this?
I would have some portion of the exemption, yes.
Would this, would this be a conflict of interest for him to be voting on it?
I think it would be.
It's a good question. You might, you might want to, I don't want to give you advice. Here we go.
I think, I think it's a conflict of interest. If you're going to benefit from it, I think you should not really be speaking on it.
Well, he can speak on it, but I would abstain though, just because you're reaping a benefit before it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would have to, I will, I will talk to some counsel before I make a decision on whether I will abstain or not. I will definitely get advice legally before I say that I will abstain because I think that this is a very important vote, and I think that we need to push this along and make a decision one way or another.
So, I do have a question, though, on the non-binding referendum. Does the language on the non-binding referendum include the amount, or just whether...
I think you would have to put an amount.
Because how else could you decide?
Yeah. You would have to put the amount.
Yep. So, at the September 17th board meeting, the amount would need to be decided on, and whether the board wants to do a non-binding referendum, either on the seat and it is the other vote, or separate to it.
Now, if we can't combine this with the vote that's happening in November, approximately how much money is it, like $2,000 to run a vote? So, we could actually avoid that by just, I mean, I'm not saying to do this, but we could avoid that $2,000 by, as a board, just voting on it, correct?
You could. Okay. You could. I think the point...
Howard, would you possibly get that on five towns voting machines?
We don't know, sir. We're going to check on that.
First hope. We don't. We don't know for sure.
Yeah. I mean, that seems like impossible, too.
It's not really. The Board of Elections don't print that stuff up until the last moment, anyway.
We will check on it.
Five towns that doesn't affect all the people.
Okay. You have your two minutes. We're not, we're not discussing this with the public right now. Who else has, we need to know what everyone else's opinion is.
I would, I just want to come back to the point that you made earlier, which is if we do a non-binding referendum, is the board, if I heard you correctly, would you, to go with the majority of the non-binding referendum, and does it make any difference how many residents vote? That's what I think I heard you say.
Correct.
Okay. That, that I would love to hear some conversation about.
If it's a separate election, it could be just a small turnout.
It could be just the veterans coming out saying yes.
Or the people that support the veterans.
Correct.
Well, then if nobody else comes out, well, they all have their shot to come out and vote, and they chose not to, so...
I mean, is it practical, practical matter if you hold a public referendum and then don't follow the vote? I think you look pretty stupid.
I mean, I, if we're going to do a public referendum, I would follow the vote.
And that's the question we need to know.
I mean, if it's...
So, let's take it to extreme. Ten people come out to vote. Either side doesn't matter. Ten people come out to vote. You follow no matter what.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Assuming it's been properly advertised, and the public knows about it, and chooses not to exercise the right to vote. Yeah.
Tom, can you give us an idea of how much this would affect us, and where would, where would we have to start cutting again from our finances?
We don't, we don't have to cut from our finances in it...
It doesn't affect the district in any way, shape, or form.
It affects the taxpayers. They have to make it up.
Correct. Some taxpayers will pay a little more, some will pay a little less. In the end, our district is...
Made whole.
So, that...
The referendum idea bothers me in this respect. It bothers me a little bit that I feel like I'm handing off a hot potato. I mean, we're the ones that have been elected to hold the office and to make difficult decisions.
Well, we hand off a hot potato every May.
Well, that's, that's by state law. I mean, we have to do that.
I don't think the general public knows a lot about it. The veterans know a lot about it, but I don't think, I don't think, outside this room...
I would say the general public, I mean, outside the veterans, don't know much about this.
Which argues for us keeping the right to make the decision because we have the knowledge.
It should be advertised.
But the thing of it is, like you're saying, you're going to have the veterans come out, the people that support the veterans, and you'll have a few people that come out that don't support it. But that's normally how these things go. And if you look at the ones that have had, and other districts have had referendums, they've been largely in favor of the exemption.
With a referendum or without?
With the referendum. Pioneer just had one, and it was like 600 to 43.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah. It was a lot of people came out.
That's a lot of people.
So, I mean, like Colin's saying, it's something that, you know, we can pass the buck that way.
I do agree with Colin that, that it's our responsibility to make the vote on it. It's easy, it's easy to pass the buck all the time.
But it's, I agree with Colin, but also I tend to disagree a little bit because, I mean, not everybody voted for us. I mean, if you look at the people, the population that come out and vote, I mean, it's a small percentage. And you have about 95%, 93% of non-veterans in the district that we're going to be making decisions for, for the 5, 6, 7% veterans. So, it's a lot of people.
If I remember correctly from the talk, though, we're talking about a difference in most people's taxes between $50 to $70. And an increase.
It increases every year.
Not every year, Barb. It is a single time...
It's one more, it's one more thing taken away from the taxpayers.
It's a single-time increase. It's not compound every year. It's one time.
It's every year.
Every year.
Right. She said it increases every year.
Well, she's talking about school taxes.
But your taxes increase every year.
Well, that's going to happen no matter what with the veterans exemption.
With that $70, $60, $50, $40, to everyone here means something different.
Thank you.
And, you know...
I think if we advertise for a vote, then more people will at least know about it.
I, that's what I think. At least get them educated as much as possible. I didn't mean that in a disparaging way. I just, you know, make them aware of the situation because most people other than the veterans are not aware of this because it doesn't benefit them. It has nothing to do with them.
When the, when the towns did this, did they have a vote on it, or did the towns just say, or were they mandatory that they had to, to put the exemption in?
Paula, you know?
I believe when it was enacted, the law was enacted, that the veterans just had to file.
Right.
So, you, they just, the towns didn't have a choice.
There's no choice.
So, the towns...
I think the choice, the towns did have choice on what they, and the counties, on what level they would accept because there are differences in the towns. So, I believe that they had a difference of levels.
Well, and because a town only has one tax in jurisdiction. There aren't four or five, like we have five.
True.
So, it's apples and oranges, what you're talking there. So, they could have clearly adopted their own and not worry about anyone else. We have five.
Well, it sounds like the issue for September is whether we do a public referendum or not.
Or do nothing.
Or do nothing.
Or not do a public referendum. So, you have three. Do a public referendum, not do one at all, or do nothing.
I, I need time to think about it. So...
Yep. Yep.
And by September, we'll know whether or not we can do it in November, where we have to, special election by then. Right, Barb, you think?
Yeah. I'll, I'll take her.
Okay.
So, in September, we would have to know.
You have to make the decision in September for the timeline to make sense.
Whether we do a referendum or not. We have to know by now.
Or whether you go for a vote or not.
Right. The vote doesn't have to be until December.
The vote, in order for the vote to occur in December, I need the 45 days. The vote, in order for the vote to occur in December, I need the 45 days in the paper, which means September meeting is all I can get, unless you want to come in for an extra meeting.
Come on. As long as you have food.
I always want to.
In the meantime, we can get this resolution to the state, and maybe they'll decide to write us a check.
We will send that out tomorrow. Absolutely.
They're going to call you tomorrow, Colin.
And, and the levels, I think that the amount has to happen for September, too. It's, so I guess I will ask the question, is there somebody who wants to get together with Mike or with Tom to, to draw up some different scenarios for conversation on September, so that they're at least written out? Right?
Well, we have the three scenarios already.
You have the max on the three scenarios.
For the agenda, you mean?
No.
For conversation, and then, yeah. So it's, so that it's more strategic conversation.
I could help with that.
Would you?
Sure.
When would?
Well, I guess the question I would have is, what would you be looking for me to do? Because I'm fine doing that, I just need to know what we're looking for.
You're the numbers man. We might need numbers.
But I guess the question is, do you want me to see how many veterans are within each group, and if you go with option A, this is what the tax difference would be, do you want with option E?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay. At least it gives me something specific to do.
You have the questions and the answers.
Do we know the exemption that the farmers get for their, through the county? Maybe we could compare it to that.
It's, it's not a very good comparison.
Well, it's a comparison.
It's, it's like apples and oranges, like they were saying. It's, it's not, it doesn't.
Okay, Barb, Barb, Barb. Let's, we're not going to debate this. We'll do the three, we'll come up with scenarios, and we'll discuss it in September, and we have to decide there.
Okay. We're good?
We're good.
Yeah, we did the resolution, we're good?
Move to adjourn.
No, I got a question.
Go.
Jeez, trying to get out of here, huh? About the scheduling this year, I noticed we're back to a homeroom and an A-B schedule, and, you know, last year we decided as a board to do traditional. Are we going different this year?
So the schedule is basically the same as it was last year. The only difference is last year we had eight periods plus a 30-minute lunch. We actually had some conversation about trying to open the master schedule so that those lunches weren't, weren't tying us up, especially because some of our incoming classes are 109. So the smaller we get, the more complicated it becomes. So rather than having an eight-period day with a 30-minute lunch, we have a straight nine-period day. So all periods are exactly the same size and duration, which allows us to move everything around a whole lot better. The homeroom, as much as I don't personally feel that we needed a homeroom, the majority of the people in the junior, senior high school felt that there was an awful lot of benefit to that homeroom for, for materials that were handed out, for classroom meetings, for, for seniors, juniors, for music, for all kinds of things. So the homeroom is back embedded, but it's shorter, and the passing times are three minutes instead of four. Other than that, it's exactly the same as it was last year, with a whole lot more flexibility than we had before.
Okay.
That's the only difference. So it's, it's, it really is a minimal change. And it's working. It's working.
I'd like to ask a question. Why would you?
We have the two minutes. If you want, it's come up afterwards.
So adjourn, just ask her.
No, we'll adjourn. We should, we already did the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And. Marissa, do we know who the JV coach is yet for soccer? She's, she's back there hiding, her hood up, or sleeping, one of the two, I'm sorry.
Putting out a desperate plea to the staff, see if anybody is interested. Tom Law and I are going to work on that. If not, it could be myself and Tom Law.
Okay.
How about the counselor? There's, Mr. Hassett, is he available to help the kids with their schedules for the next couple weeks? Because I had a few girls tell me that he's not available for scheduling and stuff.
Well, our counselors have a number of days that they work in the summer. Which exact days they are, I'm not sure. But, but I'm sure that if there are some kids that have those questions, they should just really give a call.
They have, and they were told that he was on vacation for the next two weeks.
He put in all his days over the summer. He doesn't have to work out summer.
Okay, well, the schedule just came out, and now these girls can't get their schedule worked out, really, basically before school starts, because he's on vacation. So that's a problem. So maybe we, they need to be assigned to a new counselor or something.
I'll, I will talk to the high school about that.
Okay.
Would you want me to get back to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine.
I do want to ask about the Global Connects. I do, I just think they're a little bit excessive. I think there's too much of them. The, we had six phone calls. Within, you know, we have other things to do besides answer the phone on the Global Connect.
You had two separate from me, because the first one didn't come out.
That's correct.
And then you would have had one from your building principal.
And we had one from Mrs. Carter.
We get them because we're on the board.
We get them because we're on the board. We get all of them.
Okay. All right.
So you're lucky, you got them wrong.
No, I'm, no, that's not, that's not.
But that's, and to answer that question, it was my decision that the parents needed to hear from their building principal, and so we had the building principal put a Global Connect out to the students that were in their building.
I like the Global Connect. I think it's a great tool, but I think there are going to be a little bit of regulation on what we use.
But that was the regulation, Barb. It was that the building principal needed to reach out to their parents. And so if it was a GLP parent, the GLP principal reached out to GLP. If it was an elementary parent, then Mark reached out to them. I reached out to the entire district to welcome them in. Unfortunately, I had to do it twice, because the Global Connect didn't work as well. Jeff reached out to seven through 12, and that was the plan, because I really felt that the parents needed to hear from their own principal and not just from me. We don't do a separate mailing across the district, and so it would be unseemly for us to start the school year without some message to tell the parents what to do. And that is a decision that is mostly the same, maybe a little bit different, of years past, to save the district probably close to $9,000 to $10,000 in mailings.
There be.
We could do text, but we would have to open up a different kind of software in order to do that, too. You did get them all. You're right, because you're on the board. Absolutely. I like Mrs. Carter's voice, but.
I'll suck up now, after you order the bus.
Anyone else?
No.
All right. Some motion due, June, please.
You had the motion.
And I seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Posed, abstentions, motions carried. Thank you for coming.